Okay, it looks like we're almost done.
Subtitles, captions?
Yep.
You got it all good?
We're good to go.
Okay, make a motion to open the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Call please.
Trustee Marshall? Trustee Lefier?
Hi.
Trustee Laitke?
Hi.
Mayor Plummer?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, everybody just remember to silence your cell phones, please. Yeah. And with that being said, would the clerk please read the conflict of interest? And, oh, I should say, does anybody have anything to disclose, first of all? Yeah.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not. Okay, with that being said, clerk, at least give us cliff notes on the
Cliff notes?
Open meeting.
Yes. If anybody wishes to comment, please raise your hand if you're on Zoom. If you wish to ask a board question, put it, raise your hand if you want me to ask the board a question, put it in the Q and A. I'll be happy to ask that. And then we get for this evening because I got nothing.
Well, and Happy New Year, everybody.
Oh, yeah.
Just saying, yeah, we're kicking off the year here. Any public comment? At least online, maybe? Yeah.
Nope, no public comment.
Okay, so let's dive in here with the reports, treasurer's report.
Yes, we have a bill pay for you. Is there any questions or concerns you're going to see in this report? Again, we're continuing with the prepaid with utilities. You also see the HSA payments that the board accrued in this meeting in December in here. This is, so first bill paid by Francine, she did a fabulous job. Any questions or concerns?
Will the checks be ready to sign tomorrow, or shall I wait until?
No, they should be able to go tomorrow. Give me the morning and I'll, we'll send you a call, we'll re-mail you.
All right.
Okay.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the bill paid as presented.
Second?
Second.
Call please.
Trustee Laitke?
Hi.
Trustee Lefier?
Hi.
Trustee Marshall?
Hi.
Mayor Plummer?
Hi.
Motion passes. Okay, I've also included November financials, just to give the board an overview. If things go right, you will see December at the next meeting. I'm not going to hold that promise, so stay on hold. Everything seems to be moving along as status quo. Again, the negatives are the negatives we've talked about in the past. Not too concerned with any lines at this point. Some are starting to move up and others are not being spent, which is typical. Some revenues are still coming in. Again, interest is fabulous. I'm loving it this year. So is there any questions from the board, the financials?
I did just have one question, seeing if I can make it in the packet. The, let's see, let me just pull the number up so that I, 89950. It's not finding it. So these were some of the inter-fund transfers. I'm still getting it up here.
None of those can be done at this point.
Okay, so that's?
They will stay unmoved or changed until budget end. If we have the reserves established by that point, then they'll transfer into the appropriate reserves. If the reserves are not established, they'll go back into fund balance or be used to help balance the budget in other areas.
Okay, great.
So you're just showing that?
That's the way the budget was passed, so I have to show it in that line.
Yep.
But until, you know, we might not, and this is really maybe scary. Let's say we don't get all our revenues.
Yeah.
We might not be able to fund them anyway. So they just sit there until year end. Some people would fund them beginning of the year. It's always best practice late until the end of the year.
Okay.
Just make sure your revenue is coming as anticipated.
Right. Is that a 691? No.
You're down to reinforced capital funds. It's 9950123. It's all that.
So just to follow up on that, then, we've got those numbers in this budget or in these financials for November 23, total 138,963. And that's a lot of money.
It is a lot of money.
And that's kind of what I expected based on the last budget, that there would be some money that would be diverted into reserves. So I'm not surprised by that amount. We've earmarked particular reserves here, which might, my understanding is that that might or might not reflect when we restructure the reserves where they're actually going. Is that correct?
Correct. Now, this is, this was when we sat down, when we went, and this is what the board decided. Once the new reserves are established, then we can look at using some fund balance to shift into those reserves. Or, you know, exactly what you wanted.
Or the repurposing or however.
Depending as how the year ends.
Okay, so the allocation to the particular funds here is basically arbitrary and just making?
It's the number that we came up with when we were finalizing last year's budget, so.
These are the numbers that were in the budget, but when it comes down to actually funding the reserves, you can make modifications.
Yes, you can make some modifications. Let's just say, let's just go to straight. We've had an ongoing drainage issue that's starting to tick up in cost. And, you know what, instead of putting it into infrastructure, you know what, let's take a little side of that and move it to the drainage line and cover it for this year. So you're not creating a negative into fund balance. It's, you know, we'll have to look at year end where we land. What's the smartest move? I mean, in a perfect world, this would be great, and let's go ahead and fund it that way. But until, I'd say, March, April, we'll just not even have that conversation yet.
Because we're just past the halfway point.
Yes, we're just getting into our six months.
Yeah.
So so far, everything's.
That's the problem with budget cycle. You don't have your whole budget year, you have to start the budget, you know?
It's funny, as I'm starting to prep for budget, because we're rolling into that line. I'm looking at November's numbers. Well, I know what's happening in December that, like, we've paid some big insurance. And this is right now, someone showed me $210. Well, that's an inaccurate reflection of our insurance costs, so still.
And also snow removal salt.
Right, this year, and actually, we get no major storms. We're ahead in the snow. So that I would love to see.
Yeah.
So it's an offset. And really, until, I don't think you get a true look at the budget, what's happening with current budget till February and March. Those are really a good timeframe. And I, I think the board would agree with me. Those numbers, when we start seeing the financials, really start showing the picture, and we all are falling out. The first few months are nothing. We're starting to tick, you know? But you have to look at that and those numbers when you're starting your next budget along with your others. So it's, it's a difficult guess for this year.
That's where we are.
That's where we are. Any other questions on the financials?
Yeah, so I just wanted to, thank you for the explanation on that. That totally makes sense. And I just wanted to jump ahead for a second. And thank you for the multi-year capital plan, too, that you've been working on.
Yep.
And I think that, you know, since, since we're on the topic of those inter-fund transfers, I was able to trace it over there and see where they're earmarked in 2024, so that makes sense as well.
Yep.
And that ties together. Before we go back to the financials, while we're on the capital plan, I think this template makes a lot of sense, and it's really helpful, and it'll be truly useful with budgeting. What I'm understanding right now is that this does not really include yet the, we've got a separate sheet for the DPW over here. But we need concrete costs and broad.
Right, and that's what's brought into my spreadsheet. My, the controller sheet that I used with all the numbers, I can't go any further until I input the infrastructure and roads, whatever, all those projects in. Then we can start taking a better picture. You know, I can start estimating, you know, the general budget lines.
Yeah.
But until then, but I like the ability to forecast with that. And tell you where your fund balance might be, how it's impacting. So it does, it gives you a little bit.
Yep.
It's helpful. It's just, it's set up to tie into what the DPW is working with. As I was saying, I'm kind of done until I get those numbers.
Right. No, I just wanted to make sure that I was reading it correctly so far. And I guess that's the, so we're on the same page about the next steps to do to bring this in.
Yep, now that's the next steps. We also have the RFP out, and that's due till the end of the month. So I haven't had any nibbles. We sent it out to many people in hopes of, you know, enlightening them that we have the RFP out. So we'll see what happens.
So the other pieces, we need the DPW pieces in here about the roads, and that'll be the big.
Yeah, they're working on those spreadsheets. I sent you the spreadsheet. Samuel's been working. I also gave her the controller sheets, and there's a few amendments that she can add to it. So hopefully, in short time.
Yep, and we'll have the bathroom. I guess we're down to one proposal, one design now.
Well, actually, there's going to be an update on that because there's, it's, you know, we can, we can do it at the end of the meeting. Just, Scott didn't give totally accurate information about this one, so, yeah.
Okay, so we're, anyway, we'll add that in, and we'll add in the other, other, so we've discussed that. I think we're on the right track, so thank you.
Yep.
And thanks for coming up with questions about.
That's one of your points.
Okay, so I don't have any other questions. I'll make a motion to approve the November 23 financials as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call please.
Trustee Marshall?
Hi.
Trustee Laitke?
Hi.
Trustee Lefier?
Hi.
Couldn't hear your name out today. Mayor Plummer?
Hi.
Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, and that's all I have right now.
Nope-ke-doke. Next up, the refuse district legislation. Thank you, Jeff. I know you've been, there's a lot of moving parts to this.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Yeah, why don't you talk through what it was, because there's so many different references, really, in our code. Am I correct in just terms of?
Right, we have an existing solid base code, which I think was primarily a result of recycling pushing 93. So, but it does cover other things besides recycling. So my thought was, rather than rewrite the whole thing, is to meld the refuse district in with the current code, which requires some definitional conditions. And then the guts of the district is, are, the change is the 17315, which has really got the assessment district in it. And that basically takes the total cost to the village of the actual refuse contract, the administrative cost, the legal cost, and it passes along to that new district. And then it's, it's paid back to us by taking the total number of residential units and using that number to divide by the total cost, or divide the total cost, and you get a per-unit cost. And that will be assessed, at least, no less than once a year. If you're lucky to get a two-year contract, then you do, it'll be the same assessment in the next year. You have to reassess it. Can't assess for two years.
The hope is to put out the RFP or the bid and request two years' pricing. Option A, option B, whatever we can get for better pricing. The hope with two years is we wouldn't have to redo the assessment every year, for at least one year, which is a lot easier.
Yeah. So it's a two-public hearing process to do the whole thing. Once you set up the district and always to do the assessment.
Okay.
And if I'm not mistaken, the best time to do that is before any given year's budget is adopted. Right, so you started.
This is not really a budget item.
No, it, well, it does tie into budget as, I was saying earlier, this creates another fund. And with that fund, we'll be creating another budget. We'll have to be passed for that. So it does sync along in that, because I need those numbers for the tax bill before May first. So that's.
It's the taxes.
Yes, in a way, it does tie into the budget cycle, because it's going to be right along with sewer in general. It's, it's, as Trustee Laitke pointed out, more. How did you put it?
I, maybe it's not a direct quote from the controller, but I thought I heard somebody say, more funds, more fun.
Correct. So you're passing a budget for two, now you're going to pass.
It's such an inside thing for a controller, you know?
Yes, it is. So it's like the budget grew a family. I had a child. It's called refuse. So, yes.
Well, thanks for that image.
At which point do we talk about the changes that need to be made to the local law? The ones that we got in the packet? Because I had a question about one of those.
Sure, absolutely.
And that's, that's why, yeah, right now. Yep, so that then becomes, this then does not require a public hearing, or it does?
Oh, yeah.
So that's part of the district.
There's two hearings.
Right, yeah. I said district and assessment.
Yeah.
So this would be part of the setting up of the district.
Yes.
The one question I had was to check when we made a change, maybe about eight months ago or so, in response to concerns of state street residents, we made an adjustment to our, to the time. Was it six o'clock, or was it?
Seven, wasn't it seven?
It was seven.
It's seven. I, I had a question mark there as well.
Yeah, yeah. Because in presently, and I don't see it.
Well, you have a question mark after that, that, that time as well. It is the one, two, three, four, yeah, page five. So it's, yeah. It's 17315.
173-12?
No. C2. C2. There shall be no collection of refuse between the hours of 6:00 PM and six, and you have 6:00 AM question mark. And then I wrote seven question mark, because that was.
Yeah, that was my question.
Yeah, yeah, so that's.
We wanted to double check, but I cut it with.
Thanks, Lily. No, that's a good one. And then, so what, this came up, and maybe I missed it in here, about what, how a residential unit was defined? You know, if you have like a duplex apartment building, or if you have three units or four, is four commercial, do you know what I mean? We, I think we.
Residential unit is defined.
Is that in the?
Yep, in 170, it's on the second page, 17312.
Okay, because I was looking at, actually.
17312 residential unit is defined.
There it is, thank you, okay. Oh, see, I was looking at a different, okay, gotcha. Okay. So a multi-dwelling unit. That, okay, this actually still is my question.
What?
Each dwelling unit in a multi-dwelling unit. So a multi-dwelling unit is how many units? Two or more? Okay, just checking. I just want to understand that.
Commercial is considered four units or more.
Right, okay, because there's an apartment building
Correct.
in the village that has four units.
And that wouldn't qualify unless the law reflects.
Okay, that, that's where I was going. I just wanted to understand where that cutoff was.
Yep, the assessor, conversations with him, anything under three isn't commercial.
Okay, sorry.
Or under four isn't commercial.
Over four.
Over four.
Four and over.
Yeah.
Okay, four units.
Is considered a commercial unit.
That wouldn't be.
And it wouldn't be subject to the law if the board leaves it as.
And you can change that.
Apparently, well, yes, you can.
Because right now, it's the building next to me, that's four units, and they just have a residential service. I mean, they've never had anything commercial.
Well, I've left some wiggle room, as determined by the assessor or the building inspector.
Oh, okay, you know, I mean, I don't know. It came up, that's why I'm asking. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the building inspector has the room to do that. And add it to the district.
Okay. Gotcha.
And I don't know exactly where that is, but I remember putting it in there.
The wiggle? Okay.
It's actually right there in the residential unit.
Yep.
Or the code enforcement officer of the village, including.
Yeah, it's right there.
As designated by. So essentially, they could designate it a residential unit rather than commercial.
For this purpose?
Right.
Yeah.
And at which point, if they wanted to argue it, I suppose they could, but it's up to him to make that determination.
Yeah, it would be difficult to wiggle, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I think it's pretty well laid out. Any other questions here, thoughts?
Trustee Laitke has a question.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you for all your efforts on this, Jeff, especially, and you put a lot of time into this legislation. And overall, I think it's got a lot of positive merits. I definitely acknowledge that the refuse district is, seems to be popular with a lot of residents, and there are a lot of potential benefits to it as well. My concern is really with making sure that we have appropriate time to dedicate to this kind of initiative, to make sure that it goes okay with the other pressing priorities that we have right now. So just in doing a quick survey around, we've got the, the annual budget process, which in itself, in a normal year, is quite a bit of work. This year, we're also structuring the reserves and working on new wording for those. We're adopting and preparing a multi-year capital plan, which we currently don't have in place. We're taking on a large amount of debt, which is something that I haven't been a part of since I've joined the board. We also have a context of many roads in the village needing rebuilding and new reserves for the, for that particular work. We've got a new DPW bathroom, which is a sizable project. And with all of this going on, I am very concerned that this is not the right timing to be implementing a refuse district. I am aware that some people might be disappointed if we defer this issue. However, I really think that among the constituents that I've spoken to, they tend to understand that all of this really needs to be on a firm foundation of financial responsibility. And I, to me, that would just be a very strong priority over addressing this issue at the moment. So I just wanted to share my thoughts there and my concerns about the present proposal.
Yeah.
Of that question, what would an alternative timeline look like? When could it be? Like, if it, if it didn't happen in, is it May that we have to have that decision?
You have to have this done before May.
To get it on the tax bill.
To get it on.
To implement it, to start it.
Correct. There's.
What would be the next opportunity?
Well, the next opportunity would be next tax bill, next budget year. It's never going to fall in a timeframe that's going to make it any smoother. We're always got projects and that to, you know? To me, this is more paperwork heavy than physical heavy. It's, it's, it's determining its budget. It's, we'll get those numbers and have that ability once we get bids to come in. It's, as I said, it's more of a paperwork issue.
To me, it seems like, I would tend to agree with that, that in terms of, because the next question that I would have had, and I see where you are going, is what are the real moving parts for this board, other than we know we have to have? Here, in other words, there's the administrative component, setting up literally the template, I guess is the way I'm thinking of it, for this going forward. We have the framework, we have this legislation drafted. You know, there's been a lot of legwork already done, essentially. You know, and again, you know, this time next year, we'll be in budget. You know, the roadworks always, you know, the things that we're doing are things we're always going to be doing. You know? I mean, you, I mean, we've got a lot going on. I'm not saying, no, but I think, you know, this isn't the heaviest lift. You know, this is something we want to do.
It's, it's sticky only because there's so many deadlines and
Yeah, there's a timeframe.
things that have to be posted, we have to put out the bid.
Yeah.
It's that.
That piece.
That piece.
Yeah.
But I'm already, we're already doing those pieces with other things anyway. So, you know, it's just one more on the wheel. And to be honest, the village office is fully staffed. I'm hoping that, you know, this is Francine now. You know, this will not be
Things can roll out.
so burdensome to get out.
Yeah.
I mean, at the end of the day, this is a little different animal. This one, I like to, the reason I like this is it's saving taxpayer dollars. It's not necessarily something which we're charging to the taxpayers.
Right.
So when you're rolling out something that might be, oh, we're going to increase your taxes over here, but hey, we're saving you money. I like the save you money kind of thing. So, you know, in this, this is, to me, this feels like a benefit to residents. It's not such a burden. Really quick, Trustee Kove is online, and she's not here due to a medical thing, but she is paying attention.
Okay, oh.
She just wanted me to mention that.
Hello. Yeah, well.
Looking at it in terms of time spent as a board, I think that's, if I'm hearing you, that's kind of your question. Given everything else that we're working on, I'm going to add one more to that. And that is, because I think that there's a timeline connected with this, and that is the short-term rental legislation. And I think that's something that we want to be aware of because of the moratorium ending. And I think we would want to be pretty clear about where we were as far as if we were to draft any potential legislation. And that's going to be, I think that's going to be sort of a big, I use the word lift like everyone else. That's going to be a big lift and a big amount of time.
I think it's a bigger lift than this.
Oh, absolutely.
Because I think, you know, we'll have far more public engagement on that, for sure. This, I see this just even what's before us now. A lot of, a lot of this groundwork has already been done. I mean, in other words, aside from some tweaking here that we may feel we need to do, if we do, somebody came in. I might be, you know, we, we, here we are. What, you know, what is the next step for us? So let's even talk about that. What would the next step be for us?
As I reread this thing, I noticed it was a mission. And it would be the starting game, you know, when we start this thing and, and so somewhere in here, I've got a spot for it that we got to figure out, there should be in this when we're starting the process. So to answer your question, you know, I had, I had thought in terms of commencing with Village 2024, 2025 fiscal year, which could be for the 2025, '26 fiscal year, and pass the legislation now, I mean, whatever you want to do. But it should ought to be in here somewhere when we're starting this thing.
Right.
There's a cycle.
But right now, we're, we're on the timeline.
Correct.
Okay, so right now, we're at least on the timeline. We have to draft. I'm thinking it looks pretty good, you know, I mean, unless there's some other major questions. Do you have any major questions about the legislation as well? You know, this would be the time to do it. It's in front of us.
And looking at the timeline, we even allow a little wiggle room.
Yeah.
No, uh.
Not a lot, but tiny, tiny.
Little mini wiggle. Oh, they're meeting. Yeah, they're meeting in my office.
So.
I would suggest that, you know, a lot of my attention lately from board time away from here has been in review of the short-term rental legislation that will eventually have to happen. I know we had a presentation at our last meeting. And we've got a moratorium that will end in, what, four or five months? No, not even. And that code, as far as time and attention of residents, right? To ensure that we get this right with enough opinions, right, from residents. That's been, for me, first and foremost on my mind, right? After that, I do get, appreciate the long-term capital plan, right? We've been thinking on this, or trying to move forward to this outcome here for a little while, which is an assembly of data and information that we can understand and interpret. And it takes some time to kind of work through that, and the. And it takes some time to kind of work through that and the Excel sheets that you had sent out. So that was sort of second on my mind. And then after that, we get into the bathroom, right, the reserve language, 75 Monroe, which is continuing to be a good amount of time in terms of thinking about how do we, and what do we need to do different, if anything, to make sure that that's getting followed through correctly. What I'm getting at and arriving at is, thank you for the work, I think this is great. I have not had sufficient personal time to look at this in great detail yet to say this is great code or not great code. All I'm suggesting is, if I were to move forward tonight, I'm 100% deferring to the attorney, which I'm not sure is what I want to do quite yet.
Well, I think tonight's meeting is where you receive legislation. We're not asking you to set a public hearing until next meeting.
Okay. Just bringing it forward for discussion.
For sure.
Okay.
Yeah, just if we really see right up front, oh, boy, we need to do this or that, you know, that kind of thing.
This is one thing Jeff had said, is you guys needed to digest this.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not adverse, so this goes back to something I said two meetings ago, which is the assumption of responsibilities from residents, right? And essentially, it's a taking of rights, right? I'm not saying it's a bad taking, I'm not saying it's not going to lead to a positive outcome, but it's very similar to the conversation with trees, right? We're essentially saying there's a common good here that we want to impose and and for me, I don't mind doing it at a time when residents are thinking about it and giving more time to think about it, which may or may not get it done and, you know, I don't want to move to public hearing and have nobody be thinking about it, right? So is next week? Next week would be the week we have to decide if we want to take it to a public hearing, right? That is not today.
Correct.
And will this, was this, it was in the meeting packet, so to the extent anybody's paying attention.
It will be in the next packet as well.
It'll be in the next packet as well.
Along with the timeline.
We can adopt.
The trustees want it.
Yeah, well, yeah. That's the key point.
Can we adopt the refuse district without the date by which you estimate to start it?
The date to be determined?
There's no reason to adopt it, it's useless legislation.
Because to say a date to be determined, what does that give you?
Right, I'm just asking.
No, I'm, no, I'm just saying, I'm thinking.
Well, of course, to answer your question, yes.
You go.
Yeah, but why would you, I mean, logically, what would we accomplish?
Moves it to the ability to have a vote. Whether or not, right? So the vote isn't the adoption of the refuse district, isn't it? You could adopt the refuse district and then not award a bid.
You know, no, we could do it, you could, you could adopt a refuse district and not assess the tax.
Got it.
So we could have only one hearing and not the other?
Yeah, but, I mean, again, again, unless you had a target date from where you wanted to start this thing, it makes very little sense to adopt this code if you're not really kind of go through the second step of assessing, I mean, you just either do it when you're ready.
Right.
I would think, that would be the logical way to go. But again, I'm not boss. This board is the boss.
I guess, I appreciate having this information in front of us. My preference would be that, you know, based on everything we've discussed, I also agree that short-term rentals, given the moratorium and the timeline, would be the priority to address. And I just wouldn't really take much else on, other than the STR code and all of the other items related to the budget, ranging from multi-year plans, the bathroom, to the, you know, talking about the debt that we need to take on. I just feel like that's a really full plate. Not to mention the fact that we're looking at modifying the budget substantially to add a separate fund, so we'll have general sewer and the refuse district fund. To me, that's really something that plugs into a well-structured budget rather than being discussed simultaneously, so that's my preference, is that we not take more meeting time until after the budget process is complete. I don't, I don't know if I feel strongly enough to, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, their thoughts on that. I'm perfectly fine adopting this later and dedicating the vast majority of the next three months to the other things on our plate. I, part of that is simply the understanding that we have been operating with single-family residential refuse pickup for a while and if it fits in a year from now rather than three months from now, so that we can get the other priority projects done, I think that's okay.
Lilly, your thoughts?
I understand about the flexibility and I think I agree with that. It's not, if I were to sit down and prioritize, I don't, I wouldn't put it at the top. I think we have the luxury of time, where we have a hard stop on some of the other issues in front of us. The other is the discussion at some point of potential changes in our current code we need to revisit as well regarding fee schedules and, and that's, that has more of a hard stuck timeline on it as well. And I think it's going to be.
I was thinking about that.
Yeah, it's going to be time-consuming and we, and we're going to need all of our, I don't know, you know what, it's almost like, this is a really nice thing and we want it to happen, but we have these very pressing issues in front of us that potentially could cost, cost the village, and I think we need to address them. That's my priority, I'm just speaking personally about.
No, and I appreciate everybody's input, and so I've heard from three trustees, so I personally think we could do it, but, you know, that's just my opinion, and I think that we already have the template, we already have the research done. And there's not, not a lot more heavy lifting from the board, other than making sure we establish the public hearing, you know, get the hearings and move it forward. But it's whatever the, you know, I'm hearing three opinions right here, so. I mean, all of the things that we're talking about are all the things we've always been trying to do. In other words, one thing I certainly know, and I know usually, know as well, it's always something.
Yeah.
You know, it's always something, there's always something going on, there's always the next thing, there's always the next project, there's, you know. So, and I, and I agree, it's a, it's a lot, but that's why we're here, you know. So.
I have a certain amount of flexibility regarding it as far as pulling the trigger on it. I'm flexible on it, it's, so depends on what would occurs in the next four weeks.
Right, so the level of engagement that I'm seeing, let's just talk again about the item before us, just, just, because we know all the other stuff going on, because that stuff's not going away, it's here. So the item before us, how much more engagement does it take from the board, okay, in terms of time? So we, we have our meeting next week, we have the legislation in front of us, we have the six pages of legislation, I think it is or something, to review and get back, you know, to our attorney and then make the decision, I guess, at the next meeting, and I would recommend that we at least do that. And then if we decide to go to public hearings, after that, I mean, it's really more, you're doing the administrative component, what does that really look like? It becomes more the internal process for us, not the board per se, you're just bringing that to the board.
Right, what would be next for me is to prep the bid for next meeting, because I want that to go out at the same time we do the hearing. We had that simultaneously going on, and that's reaching out to the town.
Yeah.
Because they've already done that process, so I can steal their bid docs.
Yeah, no, they've already said they're more than willing to help us with that, because they have.
They're really stealing and sharing, so.
It's sharing, sharing.
Sharing, sharing's nice.
Municipal cooperation.
You know, I would say leave it on the agenda for next time.
Yeah, we can make the decision.
See if you have public input next time and see what the public has to say, and trustee Cope is missing tonight, and I know she was a big proponent of this.
Yes, and the other part of that too is that I, I thought at one time, we had discussed having a public information meeting.
Yes, we did.
And so that has to be worked in at some point as well, I think.
Yes, the mayor's talked about maybe doing a coffee and conversation with the public.
Yeah, we could schedule one of those, ding dang boom. Yeah, I'd love to do that, just so people can come in and ask questions. Yeah.
Respectfully, I strongly disagree with the idea of keeping this on the agenda and entertaining discussions like having the village come in for coffee to talk about it. I think that what I'm hearing here is that there's a commitment that's necessary from administrative staff, and by next week, we all need to review carefully six pages of legislation. We've put off lots and lots of pages of legislation for months. And to say that we're doing that right now, instead of getting a responsible budget in place, and for example, looking at the spreadsheets for the multi-year capital plan for next week, I really think that's the priority. I've been involved in three budget processes over the years, and two of them I voted against because I didn't feel good about the planning. And the one last year, I voted on based on having a multi-year capital plan and solid reserves in place, and we're still not there. We are against the wire, and I think that even if we dedicate ourselves very fully to the budget, I don't know if I'm going to feel confident with the end product.
I'm not sure we're against the wire, I'm interested in that choice of language, only because we're starting our budget cycle and you're preparing the information, and we have the RFP out that you all have requested and voted on, and I'm not sure, you know, I think it's just part of where we are in our process. I'm not, you know, I don't know, I guess we, I'm thinking we can walk and chew gum at the same time. This has been a request from several residents, there's, you know, we've gotten response, we did our little mini polling. I don't know that it's a, it's a heavier lift, I think internally administratively, to just set up the parameters of this than it would be for our board. Essentially, we're just scheduling public hearings if we want to go ahead with this.
Correct.
Anything else that I'm missing? Couple of public hearings and, you know, pieces are in place. There's only one district. I mean, I'd like to just, if you can fit it in your schedule to look at the six pages before the next meeting, along with everything else, I'm already looking at the spreadsheets as well. We're talking about things, you know, what we do.
Am I not mistaken that any member of the board can put anything on the agenda, right? So.
Yeah.
I think by that definition, if I can on the agenda, it's on the agenda.
There's that, but I mean, I want to get the, you know, work with the board here, I mean, you know. We already have so much of the work done.
Yeah, so if I'm going to spend, I don't know how many hours of understanding and just thinking about this, then I would take. What I would say though is, any amount of time that I dedicate, I would like for it to be about having conversations of length about short-term rentals, figuring out where we stand with that, dedicating, we've got, when's our first budget meeting?
Official budget meeting is the 30th.
30th of this month, so two weeks away, we have the official budget meeting, right? The capital reserve, what if, this is a hypothetical, what if we don't get a consultant? Right, what if somebody doesn't come back, or the bid is astronomically hot? That's going to be internal work then that we have to get to.
Right, and I don't believe that's devastating either, because as you can see by the spreadsheets and the work that's being done by the DPW, we're, I curiously say 90% there, I think we just need to tie it all into a pretty bow.
Yep, so then we have reserve language, right? So if we want to talk about reviewing docs, it's going to be reserve language. So I'd like to have a conversation next week, what do you need from us to finalize those reserves? So that when we walk into the beginning of the budget, rather than the end of the budget process, we know what that language looks like, we know what the controls are in place, right?
And that's, that's already a part of an internal discussion.
And hence, I believe Jeff alluded in an email, we need to have a quick conversation.
Yeah, it'd be quick, but that will answer a lot of questions and we'll.
We're close, I mean.
He's putting that together.
And then I'll have, once I get the answers to those questions, then we'll.
We anticipate we'll have it for next meeting.
I said I'd have it for Friday.
Oh.
So then, for our next, we have a meeting next Tuesday. So on the agenda next Tuesday, 100%, I think we should dedicate a discussion of short-term rentals. Where are we in that process?
I think your committee is still meeting.
Well, the committee's going to come back, we generally have an understanding of where they're going to come from, we're going to have a couple of different views, and they provided a lot of detail. But I think we have to start having that conversation.
Sure.
What do we want? And, and then we're going to include, like, we're not making legislation, but that's, we could talk for an hour, easy, on short-term rentals and get nowhere, right?
Well, we haven't received the final reports from anybody.
But I don't really want to wait.
Okay, no, but I'm just, I'm just saying that as a statement of fact, what was presented was an interim report. I mean, I'm just stating that only as a statement of fact, from volunteers in our community that have agreed to step up to take a look at this. So, you know, I don't want to be disrespectful to them either, you know, that we're sort of blowing past anything they're going to do or say. That's, that's the only thing I'm thinking of, is that they're committing time.
Right.
And I, I think, in fact, them hearing us talk about it can be helpful for them, seeing what they provide. But I also think, if you recall, I don't remember which member of the board it was last time, but they essentially said, you know, are you all set? Is there anything more that you need from us? And we had different comments back to them, some that were saying, no, we're good, and some said, yeah, if you wanted to. I mean, my own question back was, define for me the why, and I don't know if we're going to get that, right?
Yeah.
To that point, Dave, do you think that a way forward might be at the next meeting, as far as our discussion regarding short-term rental, that we, we talk about a potential timeline? And that is not disrespectful to the committee, but let's put them on notice that this is what we're expecting as far as our timeline, and this is our.
Why do we have Alexandria, I'm liking this, because why do we make that the action item? Alexandria can reach right back to that committee, say this was the discussion we had, we would like a timeline, you know, the board also is on a timeline.
Right.
And so we start to focus that a little bit, I think that's really great, I like that a lot, because I want to respect the work that they're doing.
Yes.
The time that they're putting in, and I know you do as well, so.
And this legislation, for example.
And we'll put it on the next agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm okay creating the timeline and, and, you know, looking at workshops, which we should probably have just on short-term rentals, right? Not just this four time, because it isn't immediately legislative items, right? So we have workshops, and sit around and debate it, try to include what information we get. You talk about including the public, if there's any one thing I'd like to get the public out to talk to us about and for us to focus on right now, it's getting that legislation.
Get some dates for that.
That's our next meeting, I think that's our discussion regarding short-term.
That's why it's on the next agenda.
Yes, exactly. That's part of our timeline of what does that look like, because we all know the moratorium, how well do we know? It just goes, you know, so we have to start, start this, I mean, I think we're all in agreement.
And another challenge, of course, is the budget process, right? So in the budget process, communication with the public, like, of all the things that we can do right, is trying to communicate on the things that need to happen now. I like the idea, and I frankly am going to support, I believe, the refuse district. But as far as like what's on the agenda for the next two, three months and what the public should be focusing on, it's the long-term capital plan that has more influence on the the community than the refuse district, right, though I do think that will matter. The short-term rentals, having a coffee talk or whatever it may be, you know, for that. And then, you know, trying to reach out to the public, and I've had emails from, you know, residents that of the time that I'm dedicating, right, and trying to get things done, I'm just trying to reply back about these issues more than even just looking at, you know, the refuse language. So I know for me, the next three months is going to be very busy. So if we don't get a consultant, it's more work on the long-term capital, I don't mind waiting on this. We don't, if it's on the agenda, we'll see what the feedback is, I mean, if we have an overriding sense of the public coming in and saying, let's get this thing done today, well, okay, but I, right now, it's, yeah, this would be a good thing, let's move towards it, but the time period is the open end.
Okay. So that being said.
The timeline on the short-term rental is pretty easy to do. Figure out when the moratorium ends, you work backwards and decide when the law has to be done and move it forward.
When do you think, in your just quickest estimation, if we don't extend the moratorium, when does that law, do you think, have to be adopted?
When, so we set it in another July, so it's July, right, or June? I thought it was June, June.
So let's say end of June.
So it has to be adopted end of June?
Yeah.
Oh, has to be adopted, so then you're talking end of May, right?
Yeah, yes, we have to, we have to have. Yes, we have to, we have to have, we have to have public hearings in April.
Whoa.
File.
What, do we know when the moratorium ends?
I think the original was ending like mid-June, mid-January, and then we extended six months.
Right.
Okay.
So July.
So what we.
Local law, you could.
Has to be done.
June.
June.
End of June.
By the end of June.
Second. We only have one meeting in June?
Correct.
So it has to be done in the meeting in June?
But they could, the board could just step.
And then so that means it has to be, has to be moved to a public hearing.
End of May.
End of May.
Same time that we're doing budget.
Second meeting.
Well, you'd be done with the budget that day.
That'll be on.
If you're not done with the budget.
Budget's gone to file May 30th, right? The budget.
No, April.
April. Oh, yeah, no, that's, we're past it then.
So that means you have to have it on your desks.
Before.
Before. You certainly will want to talk about it. So I would think the last meeting in April, it should be on your desks for discussion for, on the, was that last meeting in April?
We should probably be reviewing code in April.
Yeah.
Right? If not, in March.
Then the last, the last meeting would be.
Yeah.
The budget meeting.
So then, so look, track that up.
Or, or given, I have no, no opinion one way or the other what you decide to do, but you could extend the moratorium.
Even for three months?
Whatever.
You know, it doesn't always have to be a six-month extension.
It's, I mean, for right now, there are 13 that are able to operate, and a 14th, which has been told by the road enforcement officer that they may not operate, because they came in after the agenda, or after the moratorium. So you have 14 prospective and one waiting. So, you know, how, how urgent is that need? You are the better judge than I am.
Yeah, so when you, so, you know, understanding that, even if we were to extend it three months or something, if we need.
I'm not suggesting we should.
No, I understand, I know you're not, but I'm just talking through, based on some of the, you know, that there's 13 out there and there's one waiting or whatever.
So you move it three months from April.
Yeah.
But I think April, you really, you need to have a pretty good understanding by the end of March, what you want.
Yeah.
But it's not going to be drafted until you tell me what you want.
Yeah, right.
And that should be done by the end of March.
We shouldn't have the public workshop meetings.
Three weeks to.
Four meetings.
Three weeks to draft.
What did you say? I'm sorry. No, we need to have the public. That's what I mean. Okay.
People giving us info, discussing what we've heard, looking at other codes, all of this.
Well, the reason this is good is that you now have a timeline unless we extend the moratorium with the committee, that we need a report by the end of February, not even, probably sooner.
Yeah, and I would think they'd be comfortable with that. I mean, I think they've done a lot of this. I mean, I think they want to wrap it up and, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
I think that's good. I was wondering if anybody could help us to count the number of meetings that we're going to have between now and April to get all this done? And the extra budget meetings.
You have two meetings each month, February, March, April, May, and you have one meeting starting June. But you can always schedule special ones.
So the meetings, is that including all the budget meetings?
No, that's not including the budget.
We're just talking regularly scheduled.
If they're regularly scheduled, then you have, I believe, four or five budget meetings scheduled.
Okay.
So.
So two meetings a month plus an extra four meetings.
Whatever we need for the budget, whatever we need.
Right.
They're just scheduled, but we may not use them much as a part of.
And then we've got workshops for the STR.
Good.
So then we've got like, how many, well more than a dozen meetings between now and April? Wait, wait, well, we should have extra meetings for workshops for the long-term multi-year capital plan too, because that should be adopted. I'd like for it to be adopted before the next budget's adopted. And so there's two things, like in the last 12 months or so since I've been on board, that we've had the luxury to a degree of being able to kind of kick it and know that we're working on it, and kick it and know that we're working on it, like the short-term rentals, knowing that there's residents who are working on it, right, behind the scenes. And the long-term capital plan, we did some internally, then we opted for, you know, looking for a consultant to help. We've got some more that maybe if we don't get a consultant or the bids come back, maybe we don't need to move in that direction. But to me, I mean, these are, start with my dedicated time over the next week or two weeks until our next board meeting, it's not unreviewing this.
Okay, so I think, I think it's been made clear. Yeah, go ahead.
I think, following up on Dave's thought, likewise, the short-term rental is not a front burner either. I think that we built into the moratorium a safety valve that this 14th person could veil themselves up.
Yes.
And then you have really nobody that's, that's being harmed by an extension. And I'm just, I'm only saying, I'm not saying that in the context of doing anything with the refuse district. I'm saying that in the context of the need to come up with the capital, long-term capital plan, the reserves, but you can, you know, I mean, you're going to prioritize the way you're going to prioritize, but, you know, from a need-to-do point of view, is the STR really a front burner? I mean, I don't know what's driving it, yeah.
I don't love moratoriums generally.
And nobody does.
And the utility is to write code, and I feel like if we choose not to write code because there's only one person waiting, we're doing a disservice. So I would generally prioritize it, knowing that the refuse district could get picked up next year at the time of the budget, or the, or be done in the summer, or done in the fall, ready to go, and we take as much time as we want to review it and communicate it. And going back to the idea of having an event with the public regarding the refuse district, I think if there's any one thing I want people to come out and talk about with us, it's the long-term capital plan, the short-term reserves, and the budget.
It's always, yeah, always there. I mean, that's annual.
Right.
Absolutely. Every single meeting we have for the budget's public, every single one.
Yep.
Yeah.
And what's challenging is sometimes the communication. So let's take last year's budget, sorry to bring this, I think it's a decent time to do it, but, you know, last year's budget, when we allocated money to reserves, there was criticism from a couple that somehow we were taking more money or taxing more with a higher levy and providing less, because the communication of the value of the reserves for the long-term success and the long-term capital plan wasn't adequately communicated. So again, going back to our job, communicating to residents why we're doing what we're doing, because these things are needed to be done.
Okay, okay. So we're talking about the agenda that I have before us, the refuse district legislation. So the action from the board is what? Yeah. Yeah, this is the agenda item before us.
At the, at the end of the day, as we all know, any trustee and mayor can put an item on the agenda. So I think that's, that is our policy, and that's going forward, that's how it should be. So then if trustee Coke decides she wants it on the agenda, or, you know, Dave decides he wants it on the, it's on the agenda. So that's where we are. It's totally.
Well, I mean, I also think, based on the discussion, why put it on the agenda if we know that there's board members that don't even want to take any action because there's just too much to do?
It's your decision, I respect that.
Hang on, this is part of the discussion, so.
Because sometimes things are on the agenda that some of us don't agree with, that's the whole point.
I understand.
Right?
So we can bring it back to have a table again. I mean, if it's a table now.
Why would I, why would I, for example, waste time putting it back on the agenda?
You can certainly do that. I know, I understand, I understand. I understand in ways that are quite deep. So, okay, so the decision right now is we won't take any action on this tonight. That's the decision for right now. Am I understanding that from everybody here at this table?
There's, so to clarify, there's no direction to any administrative staff or attorney at this point.
Nope. Nope. It's the pause button, unless it goes back on the agenda. That's what I'm hearing. Okay, so with that in mind, is there anything else?
Nope. No comments.
Yep, Lily? Lily, Lily? I know, I'm like, that was, wow, that, that came forth.
No, it was just a, it was just a thought I had when we were talking about the, the moratorium and the short-term rental, how moving forward with that, and the sort of the, the press, that there are properties in the village that have sold recently, that we're not certain what's going to occur with them. And they're in one very particular neighborhood, the potential is two or doubles, one is a dot, not one, single two, so one, five, or five, in one very small geographic area. So if we have no legislation, nothing, no code to deal with it, we're looking at a potential here. So I think we need to be prepared for that as well.
Well, no, I think that's why we definitely need to move forward. And I think we're all in agreement on the STR, you know? I mean, and I know that there's only one waiting, but there's, what's coming next? What does that look like if somebody decides to come in and buy up an entire block?
Correct.
You know, that's the kind of stuff I'm worried about, and I know our neighbors are too. So I agree, we should, yeah, oh, oh.
Does anyone feel the inclination to send a correspondence to the STR committee that the board at this time does not appear to be likely to extend the moratorium?
Well, that was the discussion about the term, and it's on the agenda for next week.
Okay, we'll talk about that.
Yeah, so I think you're affirming the earlier discussion.
Yep. Timeline from STR committee is what I have down.
Yep, and we'll bring it right back to the board and we'll focus it.
I'd like to see where this goes, so I'm just going to make it, maybe it'll fall flat. I'd like to make a motion for the short-term rental committee to finalize their mails.
I hate to interrupt your motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
It wasn't on the agenda.
Ah, can't do it.
So that's why we have it on the agenda next.
We'll have it on the agenda next meeting.
It's on the next one, right.
I would love to see the finality of things before the end of the month.
But that's, that's what we're.
Yeah.
I think everybody on the board is saying the same thing differently. We are, I think we are all in agreement, it's going on the agenda next week.
I heard end of February at one point, so I'm hoping it's ended by.
So the words that I used, and I will repeat myself again for the record, the words I used were, let's have Alexandria reach out directly to the board, saying that this board is requesting that timeline because it's going right back on the agenda next week. Give them the closure of the moratorium, that, you know, this is the final date, we're looking for something sooner than later. I mean, that was the discussion we had. So I think we're all in agreement, and we're all saying the same thing differently.
Okay.
Yes, Jeff?
I, you know, but you don't want to, you don't want to hear about it, none of you want to hear about the special meeting, but if you're going to get into this thing, I would suggest that it not be at a regular meeting, because you're going to have a lot of stuff on the agenda and you're going to be focused on other stuff.
Create the separate workshop.
I, I think you, the board really, and of course, it's going to be great to hear from the committee, but you have to get your own feelings starting to intermix with each other, to see where you're headed with this as a board, because, because it's going to fly pretty quickly here. And I don't think, unless you dedicate a special meeting to it, it will be hard to get closure on it.
I think that's a good point, but, but I think also what, my understanding was from the committee, that interim report, was they were just going to submit a final written report. I don't think there's any big whoop-de-doo presentation. We would receive that and maybe schedule a separate workshop.
I think you'd better get it scheduled, but just my experience in watching meetings get scheduled and how difficult it is with all your busy schedules, I would get that thing scheduled sooner rather than later.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we, so Alexandria's going to reach out to the committee, they'll probably come up with a date, then we'll poll the board, just, you know, right away, to start scheduling just that, that mini workshop or whatever we're going to do on that.
On this scheduling topic, is it possible to do one of the two things? Every budget meeting as a workshop is also a short-term rental.
Oh, boy.
Meaning, we all go into it with a certain amount of time, we've already put it in the calendar, and if the budget is a half hour, we do a half hour short-term rental. If the budget's an hour, maybe we do no short-term rental and we defer.
Well, when we did the budget meetings too, we also did hard stops on a lot of them, which I think, I think was very effective.
Yes, typically, budget meetings go an hour, hour and a half. We try to keep them.
Holding them before the regular meeting.
No budget.
No, not budget.
It was just straight budget, it was just straight budget meetings.
Yeah, there's several, okay.
Just to, so we could work through.
Yeah.
What about workshops then, before, after regular?
You could do that, but that's up to the board and their timeline, and, you know, you're.
I do not want to do a workshop after a board meeting. No.
No, you'll be here till.
No. It's past my bedtime line.
Well, we can try to end at eight o'clock.
And we, I know we can try a lot of things, but we also know the reality, my friends, so.
I just would point out, your board meetings tend to run four hours.
Yeah, they tend, pretty consistent.
So you're adding more time on the front end, and I don't think it's a good use of the board time.
I hate to suggest a Saturday, but a Saturday morning that you could talk and people coming to talk to you.
That's almost like the coffee and conversations we used to have, you know, where you could just have that mini, we could even do a mini workshop.
There's.
From like nine to 10, or 9:30, 10:30, just, this is where we are, this is what we're looking at, and get input. I don't know.
I know.
Listen to the kids.
Well, so, so we have a couple of different kids on ski slopes, you know.
Yeah, you've got a lot.
Lisa won't be, so I won't be here because I actually work as a ski slope on weekends.
So you're coaching, okay.
Your coach. Lisa won't be here since she's on leave every weekend and.
Okay, so weekend's out.
We'll figure it out.
We're just trying to figure, so we'll just, we'll sort it out during the week.
I will point this out. I know it's always beneficial to have a full board, but it doesn't mean you can't meet with four, three. At some point, we have to.
Just to keep it moving.
And even if the members change, one workshop, you get this, next, you know.
Yeah.
Maybe it allows more interaction.
So let's, so let's try to pull the board.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, once Alexandria gets that, that information back to the committee.
A full board meeting.
Okay, so we'll figure out a date next week for our first short-term rental workshop.
Correct.
That'll be.
Next week?[1672.83] Next week? Oh, yeah, it's going to be on the agenda, I'm sorry, yeah.
It's going to be on the agenda, we'll figure out a date.
Yeah, I think that's something that we have confirmed in several different ways.
What about the reserve language? What, can we get that on the agenda for next week?
Jeff's going to have it done by Friday. It'll be on the agenda.
So it will automatically be on the agenda?
Yes, that's the whole point.
That's great.
That's the whole point.
Should we, are we at a point with the multi-year capital plan document that you provided us for that to be on our agenda?
I don't think so.
No.
I don't think so.
Because you're still waiting on a few more parts on that.
It's draft, it's, I think it's reflecting what it should look like for the controller, and I'm waiting on the final piece from DPW.
Yeah.
I think really, once we have that and you tie the bow on it and put it all together, it's.
Yeah, I don't know if you know, like, DPW was hit with COVID.
Right.
You know, they kind of were short-st, you know, there were a few things, that was